... units including, but not limited to, the construction of new streets, sanitary sewer, storm, water, gas, electrical infrastructure. If the second reading of the ordinance is approved tonight on September 24th, 2018, the city council will consider the third reading and final adoption of the ordinance and will hold a public hearing and consider adoption of the development agreement with Kenyon Hills LLC related to the development of Carroll Park Apartments. The approved Carroll Park Apartments Urban Renewal Plan and this ordinance will provide that the city will give an incentive that will reimburse the developer the cost of installing the public infrastructure for the development. JEO Consulting Group has completed an engineer's conceptual opinion of a profitable cost on the public utilities and has estimated that the public utilities will cost $493,060. The Urban Renewal Plan specifies that the incentive, the maximum incentive will be the certified cost to install the public infrastructure or $600,000, whatever's less. Excuse me. It should be noted that since the rezoning request and preliminary plat for Carroll Park Apartment Development was approved on August 6th, the developer is guaranteed the right for one-year period to develop the property as long as they follow the approved preliminary plat. If the city council would decide not to provide an incentive, the development would still be permitted to proceed under the approved preliminary plat without any incentive or any of the terms or conditions that have been negotiated as part of the Carroll Park Apartments Development Agreement. So, just some background on TIF and how TIF rebates work. In a TIF district, property taxes are collected as normal at their normal levy rates. For fiscal year 2019, the consolidated levy rate for the city of Carroll was $25.7527 per $1,000 of taxable value. Debt service levies for the county, city, and school district and the physical plant and equipment levy or PEPAL for the school district are distributed to the various taxing authorities as normal. The remaining tax collections are diverted to the TIF district to be used on authorized uses. For fiscal year 2019, the TIF rate for the city of Carroll was 23.41427 per $1,000 of value. Since this project is market rate and does not include low-to-moderate income housing, the city, under state law, is required to set aside a percentage of TIF collections equal to low-to-moderate income population in Carroll County. The current LMI population for Carroll County is 36.62%. This percentage is subject to change annually based on estimations done by HUD. Therefore, the TIF rate of 23.41427 per $1,000 of value is only, basically equates out to 14.83996 per $100,000 of value is eligible annually to be reimbursed to developer after the required set-asides. Working with the Carroll County Assessor, the total assessed value of the apartment building and the 18 duplex buildings is estimated to be approximately $8.2 million. Assuming that the project is fully built out by January 1st of 2020 and using the fiscal year 2019 tax rates, the developer would pay a total of $135,043 in property taxes in fiscal year 2022. Based on that amount and after debt service, PEPAL, and required LMI set-aside, the developer would only be eligible to receive back $77,819 as a TIF rebate in fiscal year 2020. One common question that gets asked is, is the developer, if they are not fully reimbursed by the city, does the city have to make up the difference? And the answer is no. The developer is only eligible to receive TIF rebate if approved for up to 10 years. If the tax collections are not sufficient to fully reimburse the developer during that 10-year period from which TIF is certified, which will occur when the first year construction starts, the developer would not be fully reimbursed their cost. So in this case, the developer is at risk and really carries that risk. What happens once the developer is fully reimbursed? Once the TIF rate is completed and paid, the TIF district would end and tax collections would occur like any other property in the city of Carroll. Based on estimates that we have developed with JEO, it would take approximately seven years to fully reimburse the developer at $493,000. If infrastructure reaches the maximum, which is currently drafted in development agreement of $600,000, then it would take just under nine years to fully reimburse the developer. Once the developer is fully paid off, using current tax rates, projected rollback, which on multifamily residential is slowly reverting to the same rate as residential properties, the estimate, and based on estimates using from Carroll County Assessor, is conservatively estimated that once the TIF district ends, that the developer will pay $106,000 in property taxes annually to the various taxing entities. I want to highlight, even though the development agreement is not part of the discussion this evening, I do want to highlight one thing in the development agreement with Kenyon Hills LLC. There was a draft reviewed by the council and specifically in section 6.9 of the development agreement, there was concerns raised with that. Section 6.9 is related to conditions that the development be used only for market-rate housing. And to be clear, that language was put in the development agreement by the city in consultation in drafting the language with our bond counsel, Allers and Cooney, and ultimately was agreed to by the developer. The agreement reviewed on August 27th restricted the property to market-rate housing and requires that the housing units not be used, marketed, or treated as Section 8 Housing Project, Section 42 Housing, nor any other similar government program through December 31st, 2031. That was a date the city selected. This was not a date selected by the developer. In discussions with the developer, since the August 27th meeting, they are willing to extend the restriction contained into, in section 6.9 into perpetuity, and staff is working with Allers and Cooney to revise this section in a way that's acceptable to the city and the developer, and we will have that when you review it on September 24th. With that, our recommendation is consider the second reading of the attached ordinance for the diversion of revenues under Iowa Code, Section 403.19 for Carroll Park Apartments Urban Renewal Plan, and be happy to answer any questions that the council has on that.
So, under, we're talking about that LMI money. We do an urban renewal revitalization type thing, can some of those funds be diverted to that area?
So, under Iowa Code, anytime you do a tax increment financing district for a housing project, if that housing project is not, does not have low-to-moderate income housing in it, which this project does not have any low-to-moderate income housing in it, we're required to do an LMI set-aside. Those dollars can be then used anywhere within the city of Carroll. And while the Urban Renewal Plan itself has a broad range of activities that would be permissible to use that, generally you see those used as housing rehab programs. And the council's familiar, we have been working with Region 12 Council of Governance to actually apply for and receive a block grant dollars. We could use that to...
CBDG?
Correct.
Yeah.
We could use those dollars as our match. We could also supplement and do that. And those become very targeted projects. So, the one that we're currently looking at is actually in one of our original areas of Carroll around Kemper area. So, it's not, these dollars don't necessarily, and frankly, probably wouldn't qualify for this neighborhood, but it's neighborhoods anywhere within the city of Carroll, these funds can be expended for low-to-moderate income housing projects. And like I said, those are not, those are rehab projects, down payment assistance, those type of projects.
You want to go over that extension that you were talking about at the end there?
Yes.
Working with the developer.
So, originally in the development agreement in section 6.9, it had language. And again, this was, this was language drafted by the city. The date was selected by the city. This was not something driven by the developer. And frankly, it came out of really the language surrounding the life of the TIF district. So, in it, the language currently states that the developer agrees to restrict the property to market-rate housing and require that housing units not be marketed, used, or treated as Section 8 Housing Project, a Section 42 Housing, nor a project under any similar government program through December 31st, 2031. That's the current language. The discussion with the developers, it basically extend that forever, and the clawback would be essentially if that language wouldn't be followed, the developer would have to repay the city incentive that we're providing.
Okay. You used a big term there, forever. Are we even able to do that?
It's a long answer, so I took a drink of water. So, restrictive covenants is generally run for 21 years. There is the ability, under restrictive covenants in state law, that you can write that covenant in such a way that one party, i.e. the city in this case, can extend that on an ongoing basis.
Unilaterally.
Correct. So, that's the language we've been working with, with the developer. And right now, the draft language, there's some more tweaks we're working on, they're in agreement with that language and that change.
Well, they're working with us on that. They're, they're open to, to a perpetual limitation.
Correct.
What happens if it changes hands, Mike?
That language would follow and basically would run, a restrictive covenant swans with the land, not with the owner. So, that would be the case, that any new owner would be subject to the same restriction.
And we're going to have this in front of us before the next meeting?
Yes, it'll be in the packet that goes out for the next meeting on 24th of September.
And we will vote on that before we vote for the final?
Well, you have to approve the ordinance, then you approve the development agreement. I mean, there's, there is a...
The opposite of what I was saying.
Order you have to do it in, but you will have that development agreement in hand with agreement by the developer when you consider the ordinance. And obviously, developer wouldn't have a TIF rebate until the development agreement is agreed to. So, even if the ordinance is agreed to, until the development agreement's in place, there's no incentive for the developer to receive. And to be clear, this language was, was put in the development agreement really at the city's request originally, and the date was set really by the city. This was not, I know there were some comments I've heard that's been raised up to me that this was something driven by the developer and, you know, we can make a change in the future. This was really language, I mean, the developers always intended this to be market-rate apartments. And this was language that was drafted really to protect the neighborhood and the city into the future.
After that last housing plan that we looked at, that would have been like Section 8 or Section 42 type thing, there was a couple of us that had looked at this and said, this is, we don't want that here. We want this to be like market-rate. We don't want to bring in anything else. And that's why I think we had addressed that with the bond attorney to make sure that this stays away from them.
Correct.
So, it can't ever go to Section 42 because it's not going to be new construction after that.
Right, it has to be done previous.
Has to be done before.
Correct. And that's a good point. Just to kind of explain that, there's different housing projects that can occur, and people hear Section 8, Section 42. One project that'll probably be brought up is not either of those, it's USDA Rental Assistance, and that would be the Fairview project. Both Section 42 and the USDA RA projects, those are tax credits that are provided upfront to a developer when they construct the project. So, simply because, once this is built, you can't go back and get construction tax credits. So, those types of housing projects would never occur in the future. That left one open, that'd be Section 8, but again, the development agreement, the way it's written to place that restricted covenant, we're, we're working to exclude that. Because again, the developer, that wasn't their intention.
So, my understanding is, is Section 8 utilizes a voucher that can be used virtually anywhere, but we're able through a covenant to restrict that and restrict it from renewing it perpetuity unilaterally every, did you say 21 years?
Yep. There is, there's two different types of Section 8 projects. There is the voucher, which people hear a lot about. There's also what I call project-based or doorknob-based vouchers. And the difference is, a voucher, you're, you work through an agency, you're granted this voucher, it comes with a certain amount of rent that the landlord can receive, and then you pay the difference to the landlord. Then you have project-based, those are locked to a doorknob, they don't move around in the community, where the vouchers do move around in the community. So, there is, there is two different, you were, you were talking about vouchers, but I want to be clear, there's two different types of projects.
Thank you. I don't know about anybody else, I, we have a nice crowd of people here, I'm kind of interested to hear from them.
Well, I got, I need to go over a little bit. I was worried about the Section 8 on this thing. So, Lynn Hansen, who's the executive director of Region 12 Housing Authority, I spent quite a bit of time with her to talk about Section 8 with this piece of property. And she told me that the going rate in Carroll for Section 8 is $611 a month. And to put it into numbers that you can understand tonight, let's say, instead of $611, it's $600 a month. And if a person is low in income, the government will give them $500 a month, and they come up with $100 on their own, and that includes utilities. Well, if this is renting for $1,000, there's a $400 gap. So, if that tenant wants to live in this set of apartments, and they're willing to pay that $400 gap, they're making too much money to apply for a Section 8. So, she told me, this could never, ever be a Section 8 at that rent.
Right.
And then she also mentioned the one that everybody's worried about, you know, up in Fairview, that was a federal program, and very low income can be there, and they can get $0 rent. But because of the way this one's written up and the rent, that can never be a federal program building.
Correct.
You know, and they're worried about Section 8. She told me, there is random 8 section housing all over this town, and nobody knows it. A lot of them are older people, too. One of the other questions that you hear rumbling is, you know, the guy that owns it is out of town. There are multiple units in this town. High Ridge, 42 units at $720 a month is not owned by anybody in this town. Those are the things I'm hearing, and I thought I'd get the facts from Lynn Hansen on Region 12. That's not opinion, that is a fact. That's a research idea.
I just have one, before we move on, quickly, we discussed a sidewalk program at one time, repairing sidewalks. Would that be an example of something that would work under LMI?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a public hearing, but if there are, if there is somebody that wants to address, we'll give you, I can give 20 minutes total. So, it's 5:37, 20 minutes is what I'll give to the public if someone wants to address. You can use the whole 20 minutes, or, but we'll have 20 minutes. I know who you are, Neil, but tell everybody at home, please.
Sure. Yeah. My name is Neil Bach, I live at 1216 Woodland Drive, adjacent to where this proposal is. And first of all, I want to thank the city council, and I'm here representing myself and, well, neighborhood. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for putting this on hold. Sounds like you've made some good changes already in the December 31st date. I also want to thank the city manager for answering questions that have arisen since the last meeting. If everyone at a meeting agrees, somebody's probably missing, but you agree. Challenge is good, challenge makes us better. Your challenge tonight is to listen and understand. Your challenge to think independently, to understand why people have the opinion that they do, be tough, and make the correct final decision. As previously informed by email, there's little merit in building more problems. One cannot guarantee that problems will not grow with this development, and there's not been a solution to the current issues. Something has to change, or history will repeat itself. I also identified how I'd be in favor of this project and being employed by an entity in Region 12 that will financially benefit this develop is an inherent conflict of interest. So, you want to bear in mind that a couple of the letters that you may have gotten are written by the head and the person second charge at the Region 12. They will financially benefit. And Mike explained some of that to us already tonight. The population of Carroll has decreased. Carroll has a high population of elderly people who'll be selling their homes and moving to places like Garden View, which has been built. Now, all of us here have a common objective, we want to make the decision that's right for the future of Carroll. I think we all agree with that. People of Carroll want what's best for our community. The decision is a lot about relationships, both relationships with our neighbors and with others. Local developers care about our future because they live here, and so do their children and their grandchildren. I know Mr. Dirk's announced where there's Section 8 all over Carroll. This is true. But it's owned primarily by local developers, and they monitor this much better than what outside investors do. Perhaps Kenyon Hill is primarily interested in themselves economically and has a little concern for the future of Carroll. Kenyon is presenting a shiny apple analysis needed to determine what's inside. Let's look. Developers hope to have a 30-unit complex done by December 19th. And as you currently have written, 12 short years, December 31st be eligible to have everything, including the planned additional 30 units eligible to Section 8, Section 42 housing. This is not good for the future of Carroll. This is the way it is currently written. I'm glad to hear that you're at least thinking about changing that part of your agreement with them. Law enforcement and the public have a fair view, we thought that term would come up bidden way, of what the future of concentrated apartments can be like in Carroll. It is not good, and that's what Kenyon will be positioned to do. This proposal is approved. Do we want Carroll to be a place where we can safely walk the streets 12 years from now, or whenever you decide to have turnover, if you do? The city council has a real purpose and obligation to do best, to do best what is for Carroll in the short term and the long term. Encourage to work with local developers and not approve up to $600,000 of taxpayer money requested by Kenyon Hill Ridge LLC. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Neil.
Of course, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them as well. Thank you.
Thanks. Mayor? Come on up and state your name, John, please, if you would. I know who you are, but people at home need to know.
I'm John Warden.
Thank you, John.
I feel a little bit sheepish coming up there because a few years ago, in the basement of the KCs, we had a meeting with then-mayor Adam, and we talked about housing. And I said, hey, you need to get something going, you need some short-term money, not long-term big money, short-term small money. You need a pretty good plan going into it. And the other thing I said I thought we needed was some sort of objective criteria set out so the people know that, hey, anybody can come in here and apply and develop for this. And I passed out examples from different cities, different cities have plans, and they'll say, here, you do this, you get that. And most of my concerns have been addressed by this plan. I was absolutely opposed and remain opposed to any Section 42 or Section 8 doorknob projects. I didn't know they had those. Although, people do need to understand that our Public Housing Authority can increase voucher amounts, and there could be somebody with a HUD voucher living there. That's fine with me, too. Low-income people are as much entitled and as much deserving and as much in need of good housing as are my family. The part of this project that I don't quite get from the paperwork I looked at, are they going to build the duplexes first, or are they going to build this 30-unit apartment building, and then if and when they sell some duplexes, they'll build them as they're sold? I kind of feel like the duplex thing is sort of a little pie in the sky to get us to bite on. What I really don't like, 30-unit apartment buildings. Duplex is great, fourplex is okay, couple of fours together, not too bad. I just don't think people are made to live like that. Maybe that small town is a bad comparison, but Chicago is tearing down their big public housing projects because they found out that they're just not conducive to good living. Now, hard to compare 30 units to Cabrini-Green, okay?
Yeah, it's the same.
Not a very good comparison. I don't want Doug Bird's to rip me apart and in a toil say, John Warden's crazy. That's ridiculous. But, yeah, I'm kind of making the point. So, are they building the duplexes right along the way?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
That was, that was what I understood when we had the discussion with them, that the initial 30 apartments and the duplexes were all going up at the same time.
Because if they can get people to give $240,000 for half a duplex...
Those are going to be owner, owner occupied, they're going to own those.
Boy, the value of my house is going to go way up, because I didn't know there were people out there willing to pay that.
There's actually duplexes in town that are selling for $400,000 to $500,000.
Oh, wow.
Anyway, that was my big concern. This is a tough decision, and I think a lot of people feel like me, especially those people up on that ridge with those single-family dwellings.
Well, you know, I...
That's, that's what I read from people.
When, some of us were involved in that last discussion of that housing project. That project, I think, left a bad taste in a lot of people's mouth. And so, when this is, this project came forward, it was, it was significantly better than what we had before.
I agree with that.
Way better. It's, like you said, it's not going to be the 42 or 8. That's not what it's designed for. The other one was designed for that, and that's what I think, and I was not happy with. But this is something that is going to bring, I think, a lot more value to the town, so...
If market forces dictate this...
Yes.
I'm not a Soviet commissar. I'm not smart enough to plan out the future. I don't know how to do that, so I would just not have an opinion. But are we getting a 30-unit apartment because you guys are giving them half a million dollars? That's my question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Come forward, please, give us your name.
My name's Ronnie Shaw.
Ronnie, yeah.
I don't know if you know who I am or not. Some people do, some people don't. Well, with this apartment complex, you know, sure, High Ridge Court Apartments owned out of, out of Lincoln, Nebraska, been for years. So has Metalwood, that's owned out of Des Moines. But look at the kind of characters you got in Metalwood versus the pair of people you have at High Ridge. High Ridge does not accept HUD housing, never has, never will. When I managed that place, it was a glorious building. And now that I don't manage it, the ground has gone to hell in a hound basket, because you got to have the right people that are going to manage it. So, if you don't have the right people managing this building, you're not going to have the right people at all. And the cost is outrageous of what you got coming in. First off, there's no industry or no businesses in this town. Have you thought of that? Any of you?
There's Pella.
Yeah.
Orner Bachman.
All right. When I come to Pella in night from Carroll, back, back to Carroll in 95...
There's Hy-Vee.
There was almost three shifts at Pella.
I think there's still...
American Home, yeah, but the parking lots were completely full. High Ridge Court Apartments was half-full of people from Pella. Okay, you had High Ridge, or Metalwood, or American Home Shield, that occupied two buildings. Okay, it went bankrupt. It owns ServiceMaster. Now, ServiceMaster owns it. And the people, there's no two buildings, there's just one. There used to be three shifts there, now there's only two. And there's not, the buildings used to be full at both places, now they're not. Now they're not. So honestly, our, the income in this town really can't afford that building, truthfully. It can't. There are nobody out there that can. You know, most of it is done by HUD, a lot of the people, a lot of the elderly. So how do you expect the elderly to live in this, in these places? They can't afford it. And where are you going to get the people to come in here? You've got homes out there that are selling for $500,000 that got young people in them. Where are they getting their money for this? There's not industry in this town or jobs in this town that can support the payments for a $500,000 house. Period. That's one thing you guys need to think about, is the industry and the small businesses. Small business has been dwindling in this town since the 70s. Why? It's not because of the opposed jail that's coming into town, it's because it just hasn't been that way. As soon as the people, the landowners, the people that come into town with these small businesses start making and showing a profit, the landowners raise the rent, cut into their profits margin, and then they can't afford it anymore. So it drives away. And there's been people downtown, merchants downtown, trying to bring in small business, but they can't afford it. Once they look into it, the prices are too damn expensive. Pardon my language. But it is, plain and simple. And I'm not the one...
May I just step in?
Are you about done, Ronnie?
Yeah.
Okay.
But...
There's five, I've got five minutes left, and I need, there's two other people that want to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay? That's fine. Thank you for your...
I spoke my piece.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Yep.
I'm Josh Sample. I recently built a house out in this neighborhood, and I just wanted to touch on a few things that he was getting at. If I understand this survey correctly, that you're getting your information from, we may have a demand for as many as 100 additional units, is that correct?
It's actually more than that, off the top of my head.
Okay, but the same survey is saying that these households are making less than $25,000 a year. That's less than half of what you said, that the $25 an hour it would take to comfortably pay for these. So how does that add up?
So the housing survey actually says there's a range of housing types that we need at all income levels, not just under 25. That's one area. If you actually read on, there's actually, later in the housing study, actually talks about that we need market rate, higher-end market rate apartments itself, which this meets. So the housing survey talks a lot of different housing types and styles, not just one individual. Obviously, mark workforce housing, affordable housing is an area that we need to hit. This is not that type of housing.
Okay, and I understand that, but I also heard that there was several businesses in town looking for, to push this through, and I'm just curious, who is employing this demographic that can afford them?
Well, what I can say is, I know, I will admit, sometimes I misspoke, speak on the cuff. Last meeting, I did say $25. That was off the top of my head. In reality, when you're looking at affordable housing, for a housing unit to be affordable, you want to be at about 30% to 40% of your household income gross. That would accrue out to about $18 to $19 an hour. And there are a lot of employers, and it can be a two-family household, you know, two individuals making that amount of money to make that affordable in some cases, but yes.
Okay, so, and I understand all that, but if they can't find the people, then what? If they can't rent these units, they're already built, who's going to live there?
Well, I mean, the agreement's going to restrict it to market rate housing.
And what does that mean in Carroll as opposed to a big city? Do we go off their market rates or ours, or how does that work? I don't know.
Well, I mean, what it means is you can't have government-subsidized housing in the development. That's what it means.
For how many years did you say the new plan was?
Well, at this point, it will be basically extended forever.
It was originally 12, and there was concern at the last meeting, so...
Yeah.
Well, I'm just a little nervous when you use the word basically. You say basically forever.
The answer is 21 years at a time, Josh.
Yes.
And they can be extended. As I was asking unilaterally, we don't have to have permission of the owners of the apartments or the future owners of the apartments. Think of the worst-case scenario that this thing goes and it fails and it sells to somebody else. It sounds like we can actually hold the new owners to that covenant.
Correct.
And every 21 years, we can re-extend it.
And remember, the development agreement's not the discussion item of the night. It's on an ordinance to allow the diversion of tax dollars to the tax increment financing district. So that's why that language isn't here. We will have it at a future council meeting on the 24th.
Okay. And then we'll be a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, I just was expressing a few of my concerns, so...
Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Jeff Sharpenkamp, I have a resident here in Carroll. I have one minute, so I have to go fast. I guess the one point that I was going to raise is something that gets lost in this is there are well-done apartment projects. There are some in Carroll that unfortunately seem like it's driving a lot of the, some adverse opinion on this project. I think we can go to several communities around where you see them well-done. But primarily, I'm here tonight, and first and foremost, just for clarity's sake, I have no relationship with the developer. The bank does not, we have nothing at stake in this game, other than somebody I care about, our community. One thing we haven't talked about is workforce housing. We today have an unemployment rate below 2%. A lot of people look at that and said, that is great, and that, as we stand here today, is great. But tomorrow, that's a problem. We have employers struggling in this community to find workforce. And if we lose one of our major employers, and I visit with some of them personally, if we lose some of those folks, what are we all going to do? We all sat around, and because we don't like apartments, you know, and then we're going to sit here and wonder, why don't we get big employers in our community? So this is, I think, a real issue. And then the one last thing that I wanted to bring up, and I applaud you all, it sounds like you did a good job on your research, I think Mike hit it well, but one last thing, in the housing needs assessment that I know you guys are all familiar with, I do want to point out, you know, I know certainly Carolyn, you and Clay were on that, but also, Neil, you were on that. I mean, Neil, what's your solution to workforce housing? Because the number-one strategic item, increase the number of quality market rate rentals. That's what this is. Please take it the next step tonight and begin here back probably in two weeks.
Thanks, Jeff. Our time, 20 minutes is up.
Just one minute, though. Just have the short...
I'm at the end.
Just one, air, please.
We'll have, we've got another public hearing coming up.
I think this has some merit to it.
All right. This is the last one, then. Yeah, this will be the last one.
Okay.
I'm Chris Allen, and I guess my big question is, who can sustain that kind of payment for very long? You know, if you can sustain a $900 payment every month, buy a home here in Carroll, pay property taxes, which that's where the money's coming for these TIP projects, but none of those people are going to be paying property taxes. It's a true advantage to live in one of those places because you have no real investment in our community here, and that's the thing I think we need to be thinking about.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the council?
I just want to mention, I have had many discussions since we last met, just very briefly, so we don't go on. I think everybody has heard my comments that I shared from what I have heard, and I think the, there are, I have heard a lot of different comments from people who live in the area. Many of them are in my ward, and I feel it's my job to represent them. And they are concerned about their property values. And as Chris just said, these people, they're the kind of people we are trying to get, as Jeff said, trying to get to come to Carroll, who invest in Carroll, who keep up their properties, who work hard, and hopefully do want to buy a house because, as I learned when I was on the Housing Committee from a CEO of a fairly large business outside of Carroll, he said, I would put my hourly pay up against anybody in Carroll. And I'll tell you why we pay so well. We want people to buy homes because people who buy homes stay. They stay with the job. We don't want turnover. They do invest in the community, and if it is a family, they attend the schools, et cetera, et cetera. It's a chain reaction. I think, another thing I heard is, hey, we're not opposed to market rate apartments. I really, you know, the Section 8 thing, I think it's done, but it's the location. And somebody said, Carolyn, remember, the first rule of real estate is location, location, location. We have come here and done everything right, and now you're going to put, if this goes through, you're not only going to put our property values, which will impact our tax base, at risk, maybe, none of us know, but you are also using property taxes to subsidize this potential threat in our area. Can't you try and be creative and put them somewhere else? That's the common theme. It's not opposition to apartments. They don't like the big 30 units, I'll tell you, in our, you know, but that's the common thread. The location, because these are, I believe, I looked up assess, they're expensive homes in this neighborhood. So that's what I've heard for a week from many people. So I would hate to see us jeopardize the type of people we want to attract. Well, people say, well, if that's the way you treat people in Carroll, we'll just go somewhere else and buy a lot. That's it. Thank you.
I would say it makes my heart beat really fast because at some point I lived in a market-raised apartment complex, and I enjoyed having people around me of your stature. So these people want the exact same thing. I paid that same rent. And I don't like it when we say those people, so I'm just stating that for the record.
Well, that would maintain, we've got to think of this, too. As the apartment, we're looking at this as it's going to be a forever home for somebody. For some, it might. For some, it may be a jump-off point to buy a house. If they realize that they can make that payment and buy a house, they'll move out and buy a house. They may be looking there until the house is built. They may be living there until one is available. We can't forget those people.
That's exactly what happened in Carroll.
Yeah, and it's, there's a definite need for workforce in this town.
Well, again, I'll just say, people aren't opposing it. It's the location. If we could do something...
But if not there where?
A little bit...
No matter, no matter where we go, Carolyn, somebody's going to complain about it.
East of Newcomb.
East of Walmart.
I want...
Fire and Clinic.
Deer Creek.
Deer Creek.
Put it down there.
And I would maintain to anybody in the group here, anybody can be a developer.
Absolutely.
Anybody can be a developer. This is where the developer is chosen. We've already set it up as a district. We've already approved that, so anybody could move in at this point. It's whether we divert the tax dollars. That's the question at hand tonight. We've already established the area. That piece is done. That ship's sailed.
Why did we not know this until too late? You guys don't follow...
We had the public hearing at the last meeting.
But you know, it's so under the radar. Nobody knows anything. It's just like the last four years ago when we came here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a... Sorry. We'll call the question. If there aren't any more questions at this point from the council, we'll need a, look for a motion to waive the second reading of the attached ordinance for the Division of Revenues under Iowa Code 403.19 for the Carroll Park Apartments Condominiums Urban renewal plan. Some of... Second. We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote.
Dirk's?
Yes.
Luschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
No.
Base?
Yes.
Cog?
Yes.
5-1, motion is approved.
Thank you. There will be another meeting in another two weeks, and we'll have a public hearing again at that point, too. Thank you.
Resess for two minutes.
Say?
Resess for two minutes.
Want to take a recess for a minute?
Take a off-the...
That's a road flare. I think we have people coming in for the next item.
Water?
Yeah. I know she has, but I cannot take her name. The next item on the agenda is the Carroll Rec Center with regards to the proposed rates. And Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. This was presented two weeks ago to you. I won't reiterate everything. We just need to re, make sure some of the things were noted on the agenda a little bit different. Again, ordinance is to propose recreation center rate, membership rates. Those are listed below. The resolution, Policy 809, recreation membership and admission fees. The change is the 24 hours, must be 18 years old to access the 24 hours. The one right before, monthly memberships must be paid in full that period at the time or the date of the purchase. That is the same. The graduation, graduating high school senior, that is the same. And we, because of our software system that we installed, the last time we had a program, different program, and so how we charge those monthly memberships, the recurring monthly memberships has changed a little bit. It used to be 15th of the month, so if I went in today to buy a membership, everyone gets taken out on the 15th for today. If I go in today to get that monthly membership, the first payment would happen the next day. So we don't have all these transactions on the 15th of the month. It just happens to be the next day of when you sign up. We still have a lot of them when we converted over that are the 15th, but these are new ones. That's really the only change to Policy 0809. It used to have all the rates, but we have switched that to ordinance. So that is Policy 0809. 24-hour fitness, the bids, you see all the bids, they're exactly the same as last time. Andy was here last time, and he asked some questions he was able to answer. So the recommendation to approve the attached ordinance, the resolution approving the revised policy 809, and to approve the bid from Drice Company for the total purchase price of $25,537. That was the low bid. Anything to answer any questions?
Hey, Jack, not that necessarily we change direction on this tonight, but one concern I do have is the 24-hour access monthly charge.
Yep.
Not being an option for a month-to-month person. I would like us to keep an eye on that.
Okay.
And if we need to, be prepared to change it if we need to.
Okay.
And my thought is this, if you get a college student coming home for three months, a lot of the younger kids are probably going to... A lot of the younger kids probably every once are going to be utilizing the facility later at night.
Yep.
I know my kids, how late they stay up. I just don't want to lose our, or miss an opportunity for theirs.
Now, if a college student would come back and is on a family membership, yes, they can have that card. If they're already in the system, they already have one. Or if a family would sign up for a year plan. So that should cover some of them, but those individuals. Thinking, you know, maybe add a little more time to it, but I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to approving that for a college student. That is, that's a little bit different.
Yeah, like I said, I don't necessarily change direction. I have to keep an eye on that.
I will.
This is something that's been passionate to me for six years I've been on council, was trying to get this done. So I'm just happy to see it moving. Not to mention, it's one of those things we've spent some money on already. And often we get accused of spending money and then stopping and not completing the project. So I'm glad to see us moving forward with it.
I'm going to take the counterpoint to that. And I've had contact with local businesses here. We have three facilities in Carroll that offer 24 hour access. I know two of them are here. I don't know if I saw the third one come in or not. But I have spoken with them and I know there is a great desire among Rec Center. Patrons who would like to see a 24 hour access piece put in. There is some concern and I agree with it. That we're taking public money and using it to battle against private industry. We have private clubs that offer 24 hour access today. By putting this in the Rec Center, we are competing head to head with them. And using the tax dollars that they pay for their property taxes against them. I understand there's a desire for this from the, from some of the public. I don't believe that it is actually a need that we are meeting. I think it is a desire of our, of our clients at the Rec. And I fear greatly for the businesses of Carroll where we start actually putting into place systems that would. Work against private business that has come to town and worked hard to build their business. They came after the Rec. Let's be clear. That's a fact. It won't change. But they are here, they have invested and they continue to put their money in. And I'd just like to make sure that those concerns are, are real. They're not opposed to the Rec. I've talked individually with them. They like the Rec. They like the accent that the Rec brings where we have swimming access and aquatics as well as gymnasiums. And the potential to expand such programs. The 24 hour access, and I know, Mike, you're right. We have put infrastructure in place so that we can make it happen and we have made an investment. I just, as I've sat here and represent some of these businesses, I cannot with a clear conscience endorse hitting the switch and turning it on. I know that may not be the popular opinion, but it just really needs to be said. And I feel this is important that we don't utilize their tax dollars against them.
To that point, I would ask this question. Why do we buy new equipment? Why do we buy state of the art equipment? It's keeping that competition on the edge. It's providing a service to current members. This is an additional service. And defining that want versus need. And I am throwing this out for private businesses. I used to have 24 hour gym. How much that is a need? How much is a want? I don't really know how you quantify that. Our members want it. We have members that want it. Is it a need for the family? I don't know. I can't sit down and say, no, you can't do this at this time. I, I, I just can't fathom that argument. But like I said, I will maintain every time we put money into the Rec Center. And improve it and buy the high quality stuff. By essence, it's competition. So unless we're going to quit spending any money on it.
I'm not sure if a lot of the people are thinking like you, Clay, on that. There's, there's quite a few people that join the Rec Center and go to the Rec Center. And not really interested in going to another one because of the pool. So those people, they're probably not going to go to the other ones because they don't want to belong to two different places. But they want 24 access. But there are also members that want the pool also in a hot tub. So there's, there is people not in your area. I'm a, I'm a perfect example of that myself. A few short years ago, I was a member of the private clubs in Carroll. That was where I needed to be. Kids later. And now I'm a Rec Center member and my kids can take benefit of the Rec Center and enjoy the gym or the pool while I'm on the treadmill. There is place and there are purpose for each. I do recognize that.
I just don't know how, what you're called damaging. I just don't know how much damage that's going to be. That's an unknown for us at this point.
It may be an unknown, but it's an unknown how much we will gain from it as well. Now, I will tell you that the business owners that I've talked with. Feel that loss of one member, one piece of revenue is damaging to them. They struggle and work privately to keep up with that very state of the art technology and equipment that you mentioned. And they do, they work hard. They work 14, 16 hours a day. They, they plow in their entire livelihoods to this industry. And I just, this needs to be addressed at the table. You know, I'm very grateful that this came back around and we're able to address it here tonight. I, I really appreciate the time you've taken in listening to me. I don't often take this much time on stuff, but I really feel passionately about this, that we are encroaching on private business with this move. And I've, I've got my piece said.
I got, I got one question for you, Clay. Would you oppose increasing our hours, extending hours? Because we've done that in the past.
Sure.
You would oppose that also then, or?
Jerry, I'd have to give it some strong consideration. I don't know.
Fair enough. And to the owners that are here, please walk with us. I'm not trying to create an air of competition. But on the other hand, we have taxpayers that are using the facilities that have requests. And we have an obligation to them as well to, to meet those requests. And I understand it's, it's going to create some difficulty or potentially create difficulty for you guys. But you've also got to think of the members that are there for a reason. And they have as convoluted lives as what your members have that require the 24 hours. I just ask you to consider that as well.
Jack, this may seem off topic. I have a question about the camera system. Will this be advantageous to more than just the, where the 24/7 workout section will be?
Yeah, I believe there's one extra.
A long time ago, you said, we really did need more.
Yeah.
For security. So this investment is for more than just the 24/7?
I believe.
Or not?
I believe, yes. I don't have the locations, but I know we talked about, and I'm not 100% sure, but there might be additional one in the gym.
Okay.
Because they have some beds, some spots in there.
So it will be advantageous for other sections also?
Yeah, but again, majority of it is for the 24 hours, so. Either, either way, I think we needed some cameras in the, in the weight room.
I remember you saying that a long time ago, but I didn't know if that had been remedied. I couldn't, okay, thanks.
I'm really glad you segued into that, Carolyn. That does bring up another question of security. With the cameras proposed, Jack, will you be covering 100% of the workout area that's accessible 24 hours a day? Will, will there be any blind spots or are?
I don't believe so, no. We, we made sure that they knew where they, all the companies came down, looked at the facility, had ideas. We show where the corners are and we need to see everything.
And with that and monitoring that, you very generously at the previous meeting we had, mentioned that you'd be watching that video footage routinely?
Yes.
What, can you be a little more specific about that? How, what's your routine? What's your plan for that?
We, I will go look on the cameras. One, if we know there was a possible incident or something. But generally, once a week, couple times a week, I will look at it. Our hopes is to have this monitored to other, other places. I know last time we talked, maybe at the comm center. I have had initial conversation with the sheriff. He's getting back to me if that's a possibility to have it at comm center. I hope there's something we can do with the police. But I will review them weekly. Will it be every day and watch from nine o'clock when we close till 5:30 in the morning? No. I will scan it. There's ways you can go find, you know, in a minute, you can see about 10 minutes of video.
And I can tell you that a best practice that I've, I've caught from at least two of the local facilities is that they do police that daily. And they find value in policing that and they recommend that the sheriff that, that you may want to find some way to form a system to do that. And make sure that you are watching it, not only for the safety of our patrons. But also the safety of the equipment in the facility as well.
Sure. We will have someone in the building. They won't be in that room. Most likely they'll be in the hallways, in the gym, cleaning locker rooms. So we will have some presence down there till about two in the morning.
That's good to know too. Thank you.
A little bit earlier Saturday, Sunday, because we close at seven, but they'll be there.
Jack, maybe off the top of your head, I know I'm lobbied. I talked to a couple of the owners this, Mackie this, today and, and Tony Murnamont Sunday. And they asked me if we had any, I know, I am lobbied a lot for this. And they both asked, do we have any idea how many people are, would take advantage of this at the Rec Center? I said, I have no idea. All I know is people lobby me a lot.
Yeah, people lobby me, sometimes the same families, same couple.
Right, right.
We hear, you know, I, I work late at the hospital. We still have a family membership, so it'd be nice, you know, to be able to use that facility hours we're not open. This could potentially shorten some of our staff hours. Save revenue on that side. We're, we're about family and senior memberships. When, when these places did open 10, 15 years ago, we had a significant drop in single memberships. Adult memberships, we were in the 7, 800, single memberships. That's down to 400, 4, 500. So we did significant, and we've lost revenue and we continue to raise prices. We've tried to make sure that we don't go out and do things that are competing against the, the private companies. I own the two for sure. And there's things that we don't do because of that. This, I don't believe is really as big of an impact as other things we could do.
Well, I asked them, they asked me the question, I asked them the same question. And it's about a dozen members that they have that show up late. And Mackie said, I could pull you my numbers. I said, Tony told me about a dozen that are. And if I remember correctly. Very few use it past 9:00 PM or early in the day. So really, I don't know if when people tell me they want 24/7, what they really mean. Do they want us to stay open till midnight? Do they want us to open at three in the, you know. Jerry brought, because I discussed this, the extended hours too. And we have invested. I agree 100% with Mike. We have invested. We need to figure this out and make it work. And make it work with these businesses that have invested in Carroll too.
You're really going to struggle getting staff past nine o'clock, Monday through Friday. Information I received from a gentleman who had, has a very large health club. Says, and this is a community of about 150,000. You'll see activity up till about midnight and then you'll start again about 3:45.
Okay.
At four is what they see. And again, that's a very large community.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Cott, you had some insight on that those times too, correct? Just, I know with personal experience I had in my gym, as small as it was, we, we literally had people in around the clock. I had a conversation with my wife this weekend just to make sure I wasn't off my rocker. She validated that I wasn't off my rocker, that we had members throughout the night.
Did you ask the rest of us?
Well. Time is short. I might have, I just don't remember it. But no, we, we had people in literally around the clock, so.
Well, I guess, and I said this to both the guys. I said, well, we aren't even 24/7 yet and you have a dozen. That's not a huge number, you know, and we're not doing it yet. And so then I started, I thought, I need to be open. I need to think about this. And then I guess when you brought up staff, they don't want to stay. I get it. So if we did something like major extended, you know, like extended hours. Then could we, we would, the camera system and the access control cards, can we use the cards? I mean, let's say that we tried 24/7 and we're finding there just aren't that many people. Even though it seems like it, because so many people talk to us about it. Would this, would this still be, this would still be a good investment if we went to some kind of extended hours or not?
Till like midnight?
That it wouldn't be thrown away. I was asked about my fiduciary responsibility by Pat. And I said, hey, I'm all about it.
So these cards would be able to work up to midnight, then again at four?
Yeah, or something like, I just want to know. I think this is a good investment.
But let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
If, if it's not staffed anyway, what difference does it make if you close it for four hours or doors locked for four hours?
I don't, I know, I know, but.
You know, I see where you're going. I understand and respect it. But it's just, if you're looking at that way, if you've got three hours.
If you're going to do it, you might as well.
Those individuals are buying at $10, so they have access to 24/7.
24/7.
If they want to come in on Christmas Day, New Year's Day, they want to be able to use the facility.
Wouldn't make any difference with like utilities or any of that kind of stuff. Okay, you answered my question.
That question Carolyn, or comment Carolyn just made about the utilities. How will we light it? Will we light it 24/7 or will we on a motion type system or?
The weight room is on a motion system. The, you would keep the hallways and we can control some of that. You know, the gym would be turned off. There, there's some security lighting. Pool will be shut off, all the rooms. So we have some decent control of how. And, and this doesn't include, you know, putting new locks on. So at nine o'clock, the bat, all the locker rooms locked, those rooms, they're on a system that they lock. Yeah, we have lightning storm. One of us has gone down there and make sure everything is working right. So we'll have to do things like that periodically, but. Yeah. And we're, we're going to be learning, you know, next couple of weeks. How, we'll have lights on, yes.
We don't have a backup generator there.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, there's a backup generator that has emergency lighting.
So it would, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Exit signs would work to get them out of the building. So, yeah.
Control panel area going to be open for access during that time? Are you going to fence that up or what do you do?
Those are all locked, yep. We're probably going to go to a system where we have a laptop similar to this that they will put away every night. So, yeah.
Just to refresh my memory, the access for restroom facility, showering, et cetera, will be the family changes?
Yep, yep. As soon as someone walks in, they push the button, it locks. The only time it unlocks is when they hit the switch to open it up. So it'll be, there's cameras right there, so.
Mike, at the last meeting, didn't you have a comment about the $10? Didn't you say maybe have that increased?
Well, my, my concern with it was if you have one person in your, in your membership, whether you have two, three, four, five, just the exponential growth with it. And I've had conversations with Jack, I guess, and stuff. He's kind of held my hand through it, walked me, walked me through that process. So my only, only issue I really had at this point was just that it was only on an annual basis. Like I said, it's, this isn't an in stone binding contract here tonight that's going to last forever. There's an issue of people decide, hey, I want to have this for this, you know, whatever, for this few months. I'm here for the summer or whatever. It's something we can visit them.
So it's a monthly, Jack, so it's just billed to a monthly?
Yeah, yeah. They're committed to a year. And they can do it 10 months a month or some people come in, Brad would walk in, pay his family membership. He'll pay $120 for the year to have that access.
And you can look, and you can electronically.
Divid.
Yeah, but their card, so they don't pay or decide they want to quit. We can make sure that their access card does not work correctly.
Yes, yes.
All right. Absolutely.
Yeah, and I believe staffing was part of the issue with the, with the annuals. Just not having the extra work of tracking that. My only argument that would be is if somebody comes in and does their monthly membership, you charge them. Let's take another block, block on the, on the screen and they get their $10 charge for that, so. I would say I would have you seriously consider that, but.
Okay. Okay.
So we can, we can visit that.
I, yeah. I understand.
I can say that the gym owners I talked with were pleased to see your action, Jack, and maybe the, the board's action of raising the rates and including a, an additional charge for the twenty-four hour service. That was, that was well received and appreciated to at least keep it on a more competitive level.
Well, and I, I think forcing the, the annual membership to use this will probably also be a deterrent, that would keep them from hopping gyms.
I'd concur to that.
Is that, do you guys do month-to-month memberships?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so this, this would probably be a deterrent to jump from you guys to us.
I was gonna let me address Mike whenever we're done.
Okay.
I think, I know somebody wanted to talk, did you, Tony?
Yeah, I'm sure both of us want to.
Yeah, that's fine. If there aren't anything else from the council, I'll come back to them, but just in the essence of time, all, a lot, ten minutes. So you guys have a total of ten minutes together, five minutes each if you want. Jen, you want to go first, or Tony? I, I had a discussion with somebody's significant other just before I got here, so. I said, I will not, that's, uh, so it is six thirty, and, uh, go ahead, Jen.
Okay.
Give us your name and.
I'm Jen Mackie, I am an owner of Anytime Fitness, and this is Kimberly Preston, she's the gym manager. Um, and of course, I'm stuck here tonight, Pat's out of town, so. And we just wanted to make sure, we brought up a few of the concerns, and you did address a lot of them already tonight. But some of our concerns are, again, about security, um, that making sure there's no, no blind spots. I know that Kim and Pat went through a lot, trying to make sure that every corner of the gym is seen on camera. And we have fifteen cameras in our gym right now, so it's, you know, it's something that's really important for security and safety of all of the members, to make sure that every corner is able to be seen with the cameras, so that's a, that's a major concern. And then just making sure somebody's monitoring it daily, uh, because Kim does monitor it every morning, just to make sure there's nothing. Sometimes there is some, as Pat would call it, tomfoolery going on, um, and, you know, people sneaking in with others that aren't members and that type of thing. So, you know, just things that go on during the night that might not happen during the day when it's monitored. And then the locker rooms, I guess that was addressed, we didn't know if the locker rooms were gonna be included in the, the secured area, or, but that sounds like that's gonna be locked off. So, um, that's good, that'll be easier to monitor. And then, um, that the shared members that actually, um, that shared that the member, that, that actually have are minimal. We do believe that adding this facility is a real need. So, um, we have shared that the members, I'm not sure what that means, so I'm gonna skip that, I don't even know. Oh, yeah, so, just like us, yeah, there's a few of us.
Share members that.
That use both gyms, yeah, and our family is one, you know, I mean, our kids like to use the basketball court and the pool and things like that as well. So, um, there are a lot of members that do that right now. Twenty-four Fit, twenty-four hour fitness is a luxury that private enterprise capitalizes on, it's an asset in our court. One lost member equals lost revenue, one member that doesn't join our gym because the rec now offers twenty-four hour fitness is lost revenue. One member lost, or one member not gained, is quite simply lost revenue. One member is too much and causes competition between private business owners and municipality. Tax pay, paying privately owned businesses, by the way. Cost for conversion for twenty-four hour fitness is a dollar, that doesn't need to be spent, even if the majority of the cost has already been experienced. The city, municipality is meant to be, to offer services and facilities, uh, facilities that private enterprise cannot provide. The service is an asset for our gym and should not be competed with by municipality. If you want indication of direct competition from the rec center, Pat was recently contacted by Farnor Bachan, and, um, they wanted to, um, they were looking for a twenty-four hour gym, just kinda shortening this up from him. He said that they were looking at all of the other, um, all the gyms in town, and when, and then they were contacted, or something happened where the rec center said, hold off, because now we're gonna be twenty-four hour member, or twenty-four hour gym as well. So that kind of took away business from us. That could have been handled right away, because now this is going on. So, just again, direct competition with tax paying private enterprise, so. Did you have something else to add?
I guess, so Kimberly, manager of the gym, my biggest thing is the security. I mean, we want to, we want everyone to be healthy and enjoy health and wellness, and I don't really care where you're at, I want you to be healthy, but I'm really concerned for security. Like I said, I check the gym cameras every day, we have no blind spots in our gym. It is a process, it does take me time, I'm paid salary, so I get paid to do that. I'm also on call twenty-four seven, so when something goes wrong, they call me. I get out of bed at one o'clock in the morning, I go there, three o'clock, when the computers aren't working, can't scan in, that's still me. So I guess that's our biggest concern is.
And the internet, when the internet goes down, the fob system goes down as well, so then someone has to go let people in.
Yes.
Or fix that too, so, or if the power goes out, that type of thing. So it's internet based system.
Yeah. But, yeah, our camera system actually, and I don't know how yours would be set up, but I can see who scans in. I can go back to the camera system and I can track, okay, so Jen scanned in at three thirty, and then she's scanning again at three forty-five, that's a little fishy. I'm gonna go watch the video and see, I do look at all video all the time, just kinda do the fast forward and see what's going on. Because we do have, and have had incidences with, you know, the seventeen year old kid that takes the fob off the counter, grabs some of his friend, and he's in the gym messing around in our training room, using the balls, kicking him around, and, you know, that's not okay. And then I have to contact the family and let them know. So that is just some things that we want you guys to be aware of as well, with the twenty-four hour facilities, that you have those.
Can you monitor your system live?
Yes, Pat actually has it set up on his iPad, and we're in the process of trying to get my iPad as well, so that I can see it from my home.
That's something we'll be able to do. What's your, it's like, yes, what's your policy if someone uses, if I give Brad my fob, what's my punishment?
Fifty dollar fee.
I'm saying people don't use the rec center again, I think we are so, very, very strict, at one time, you know, we don't allow this.
Do we have that in this ordinance?
Yes.
Policy.
In the policy?
In the policy, so. Our number one thing is safety too, and again, this is why, you know, so our members are here in, you know, one of the areas, you know, fitness classes, we charge thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five dollars, if we'd include that in our memberships, similar to what they do, that's a huge difference. Then we're losing, they're losing members, we're not doing things like that. I, again, this is something that.
The other thing I wouldn't mind, you know, over time, is getting our rates increased. I mean, we're way under, in some instances, I think, from what you guys do, and we gotta swim and pool, we gotta take care of. You know, I, I, you go up to the YMCF in Spencer, and that was eight years ago, I looked at that, and that was seven hundred and fifty bucks per year. I mean, we're nowhere near that.
No, no.
You know, and, and it, if, if those rates increase, that's gonna drive people out, it's bad for the people that do too. But, you know, still, we gotta get that raised up, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack.
There's an area of competition, that's probably our biggest.
That's, that's me, that's.
Eric, you brought that up, I looked him up, the, the Bedell Y is, it, it is packed with people, they have the workout place. They aren't, I thought they were twenty-four seven, they are not, they have extended hours.
Okay.
But you know who's twenty-four seven at their website, the rec center in Sac City, the rec center in Manning.
Yes.
I did not know that.
Manning actually put theirs up in competition to my gym in town.
Well, anyway, I don't want to take your time.
Thank you.
Tony, go ahead.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share my perspective on this topic. For those who don't know me, I'm Tony Wernamont, owner of Platinum Fitness here in Carroll. Uh, I'm the owner manager, head trainer, um, and I reside at one nineteen West Second Street here in Carroll. I started my health and fitness career here at Carroll over eight years ago. I was new to Carroll, and when I started building my life here, it did not take long for me to figure out that Carroll's where I wanted to put my roots. Carroll embodied a lot of things that I wanted to be part of. One thing I've always admired was the city's commitment to small business. It's not hard to see Carroll takes pride in the small business atmosphere and continued commitment in its continuation. This is hard to find in today's economic climate. Another is the commitment to charity and helping those in need. Carroll pulls together in times of need or crisis to make a difference. This example has helped me evolve myself and my own, and the implementation of my career in Carroll. I've always felt that we are blessed to have such a great rec facility, it is a fantastic facility. And, uh, it, it brings a lot of value to the citizens' lives with the pool, gymnasium, the kids' programs, and the sports. I took over ownership of Platinum Fitness in two thousand and fifteen from Joel and Lisa Lampy. Platinum is a twenty-four hour facility offering a variety of strength and cardio equipment, as well as personal training and class variety. I originally took over the great facility, uh, to help the citizens, help them reach their goals, and offer something for them to want to be part of. Over the years of ownership, I have developed a greater vision for my facility. In spirit of the examples set by the community, we have reached out to the special needs community to enrich the lives of those with challenges, as exercise has a positive effect on their health and well-being. And I think everybody knows that, when you exercise, you feel better, and everybody should have that access. That was a need that was filled, because nobody else was filling it. I took the step and I did it, all right? So, we're also working with the Animal Rescue League to help bring awareness to the available animals that need a home with our Platinum Pets. Every month, we pick a pet, and we highlight that, and we put it on social media. The goal, to get those pets a family, and to, and to help them find love. Okay, all right, I'm lost. We offer discounts for those members wanting to volunteer as well at the, at the facility, and we also give a one month free membership to those who adopt a pet, as a little added incentive, a thank you for doing that. I tell you this to illustrate my commitment to the community, I, I love this town. I've had opportunities to leave this town, I was forced out of this town and stuck around till I could come back. This is where I wanted to be, all right? I have always believed the private sector and the city can coexist in a complementary partnership. We can work together to better serve the citizens. I see the rec offering and filling the gaps of which the private sector cannot. Improvements to the gymnasium or expansion of that, the pool, the rec, uh, and the kids' programs are examples of where the rec could complement private sector better, and let us do what we do. Adding twenty-four hour access to the rec does not complement my business or the other twenty-four hour facilities. It creates direct competition with my business and the ability to serve my members. The consequence of another twenty-four hour facility will reduce, be reduced memberships, and potentially limit my abilities to outreach to those people that can't get served, all right? So I come as a commercial and residential taxpayer, as well as a business owner, and I pose two questions in consideration of this question. One, with three other facilities offering twenty-four hour access, is this really a need or just simply a want? And two, can the money be better served, better allocated to other projects that would better serve the community as a whole? There are plenty of things that need the money, things that the private sector, we will never provide. And I think that is, more of the goal of the city is to take that responsibility, to work, work and do those things that we can't do for the city. Now, to Mike's comment, you know, about competition. I'm kinda torn with that a little bit, because this, the rec operates in a world that the private sector doesn't. And so competition is kind of a sticky thing when you don't play on the same playing field.
It is.
So, I just think that needed to be pointed out, because I don't, I'm not against people having safe equipment, but at the same time, recognize the fact that we're not playing on the same playing field. It's, it's just not the same. So with that, I thank you for the consideration and for your time. Um, and I look forward to working with the city more, and building a bigger, better relationship between the private sector and the city to serve the people of Carroll. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I address, Mr. Wernamont? You're not supposed to, but.
That was my miscommunication. Yeah, go ahead.
You can go ahead.
Tony. I just don't want to get a confrontation.
No, just, just know this, I mean, my heart is this, I don't want to compete with private business, but I also don't want to limit our current members. And that's, that's the position I'm at, so.
And that's understandable, and that also is where we come in. We, we, we are an extension for those needs or wants of your members. Because we already have, we've already established that there are our dual memberships, people are already doing this. So why is that a problem continuing?
Thanks, Tony, thanks, Jen, appreciate it. Um, I, I kinda sit in your court too, I, I play to that respect, it's, I don't like government competition with, with that. And that's why I keep going back, I will still go back to these prices of these memberships. We're, this is what needs to be changed. This, that's, I think, to me, the direct competition to these places. If they're, if they're at six hundred dollars a year, seven hundred dollars a year, we're at four fifty, and we got a pool and a basketball court, that, to me, these fees are outrageously low. That's what needs to be raised. But, I, and I, you know, I, since I've been on here, we started that twenty-four hour access, that's what we were, have been leading up to for the last six years that I'm aware of, so.
Well, it comes before the council, and at least we have the, the opinions of these local business people, their concerns, and I do appreciate us all hearing that out, and that's something this council's been very good at, is keeping an ear to the people. You know, we, we had a large group in here earlier, we want to hear from everybody, so thank you all for your time and consideration in handling this.
Does that ten dollars cover, you know, to me, I guess, I.
You don't know till we put out there, family members want to do that conversion.
You know, a broke, a break even? Or, uh, what would break, break even?
Yeah, this is my first thought of it, you have a twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollar system, that's twenty-five hundred single memberships, but this system's gonna be in place for ten years, before we may, probably need to update and redo things.
Twenty-five hundred a year.
But that system can be used.
Twenty-five hundred months.
Yeah.
Months.
Twenty-five hundred months.
No, a year.
No.
Per year.
Per year.
Per year.
Ten dollars a month.
Two hundred and fifty.
Twenty-five hundred months will pay for that twenty-five thousand.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah, they're paying a hundred and twenty more per person a year for.
I, I think that the, the camera system would be warranted anyway, um, just to kinda help some of the staffing.
In the system, that door on the north side was designed so we could put a fob in that system to update. We had the lighting, we put in the ramp, we'll need to do some parking, you know, painting us a parking spot for that location.
Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fourteen cameras that we're purchasing with this is in addition to the cameras we actually have.
Yeah.
At the rec center. So, and do you know how many we have today?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So.
One, two, I, eight.
So I mean, thi- this is supplement, what we have, so we, we avoid those blind spots.
I've got one question, if I may. What about the parking lot, security in the parking lot?
There'll be a camera outside that north door.
What about the?
People won't park on the west side or the east side, we don't know how many people will be there, but, um, no. There's cameras in, in the facility, there's lighting out there.
I'm just.
Sure.
Trying to understand the, you know, security.
Yeah.
Also what goes on in the parking lot, you know, I don't want the kids analyzing our cars.
No.
Are there any more questions from the council? If not, I'll need a, uh, motion to approve the ordinance with the correction of the word reveals to repeals in section one. That will need to be changed for the, uh, the ordinance for the new recreation center rates.
First, would you like to approve the first reading, or?
Well, I.
I'll wave all three readings, that's the first step.
Yeah, I, I can't make a motion, so I'm, I'm offering someone to, given them language, yeah. They can either wave first reading, and then we can come back and.
We're working rates only in this ordinance, is my understanding of it, right? This does not affect the, it does give us the ability to collect a ten dollar for twenty-four hour access, but.
Correct.
This is not approving the system or.
Correct, this is just the ordinance for the rates. We will have to go back and do another motion for the other stuff.
Mike, you're the master of the ordinances, can, can you help out here?
You wanna, you can, we can wave the first reading and bring it back, or wave all three readings?
For the rates, I would wave all three reading, all three readings.
I'll wave all three readings.
I would second that motion.
Have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, we'll need a, a vote.
Cass?
Yes.
Kushner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Nurse?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion to adopt? Oh, okay, and we'll need a second.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion to adopt. Oh, okay, and we'll need a second.
Second.
So, Cott and Haley, first and second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
And then, the second motion we need is for the resolution of the REC Center Policy Number 0809, the REC Center Membership Admission Fees. Correct.
And that is different from the rates we just approved, how?
This is setting up policies on how we apply these...
As to how to apply.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
For all that's voting out, so we can...
Good question.
Sometimes pile the stuff together. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote.
Baze?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
No.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
And then, the second motion we need is for the resolution of the REC Center Policy Number 0809, Parking Regulations Amendment. And Brad?
Thank you, Mayor. I received a request to remove parking on Fifth Street between Grant Road and Wallace Street. The reason for this was that the change in the garbage pickup for the automatic service blocked some of the garbage pickup at that location due to farmland, employees parking along the spot there. Currently, there's no parking on the south side due to Mid-America having power poles and things that need access to that on the property. And the residents on the north side have now asked for the same restriction on their side. This is currently a no parking zone due to the construction at Grant Road and Highway 30. During this time, we have gotten no complaints from the residents at that location. Garbage is picked up from what we can tell, as normal. I also sent a letter out on March 1st to all the residents on that block, along with Smithfield. Received no objections to this and got one call back from the plan manager, Mr. Smithfield, who was supportive of this change. So, my recommendation is council consideration. I did write the first reading of the ordinance, but as we sit here, I think we might as well wave all three and approve the ordinance at this point.
Somebody approached me, I think it was a property owner, a long time ago, and I brought it forward and it kind of died, but...
We visited this a couple of years ago, too. I had one owner that came to me, and then I went door-to-door speaking to the residents that lived there, and only the one was supportive, the other ones weren't. This is, these are houses that have either no driveway or single vehicle drive, and they were parking in the street at that time. Since the garbage has changed, they're fine with it getting removed and what the garbage picked up, and I'm not concerned about the vehicle being parked. So they're making accommodations to change. And a lot of the residents have changed ownership since that time also. That was about, about three years ago at this point that I got that. I don't think I brought that to council, I think that died off before we got this far.
How many homes does this affect?
Roughly five.
Five, okay.
The owner that came and talked to me moved to Boone shortly after he talked to me, so... Are there any other questions for Chief? Now, I'll look for a motion to accept the, motion to approve the Carroll City Ordinance Chapter 69 Amendment. We can wave all three readings.
Wave all three readings.
That's fine. I just need the motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dirks and Haley. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is resolutions, and we have the Sprintcom Water Tower Equipment Modifications. Enter Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sprintcom is proposing to make modifications to their equipment that's located on the water tower. Primarily, their modifications will primarily include that equipment that is on top of the tower. They certainly have equipment on the top plus equipment on the ground that are on the tower. Their modifications are detailed in the amendment, that is, with your information. I believe there was an amendment, attachment B1 at your table tonight. That came in today. There's a minor change in that attachment from what was originally sent to you. And it's not a substantial change, but we wanted to get that to you. The proposed changes are replacement of their three antennas that are on the tower and then the addition of about six radios. The radios are mounted with the antennas, so it doesn't take up any more space on the tower, so there's no recommendation for a change in rental fee to Sprintcom. Unless there are any questions, I recommend adoption of the resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Water Tower Option and Lease Agreement with Sprintcom.
Is the change in the way the wires are leaning against the pole on Picture 4, is that what the change is?
Picture 4?
Yeah, on the second page.
Yeah, actually, you're right.
That's it?
That's the change. The original plan showed what's called an ice bridge...
Yes.
In Detail 4. And there is no ice bridge, there never was. We brought that to their attention. And actually, from, excuse me, from our tower, they're capable of underground and then back up to their ground mount.
Okay. Well, I suppose for the purposes of the project, it has to be in detail.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, okay. And they pay us rent, correct?
Yes, they do.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Water Tower Attachment Option and Lease Agreement with Sprintcom Incorporated. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Cott and a second by Haley. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
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 Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
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 Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
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 Yes.
Baze?
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 Yes.
The bid net, the net price was twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars. They were, their bid did list that they were giving a donation of three thousand dollars towards, I believe it's the, a project, they're looking at doing another project out on the patio at the clubhouse. But the net, the cost to the city is twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Under budget, always like to get more than one bid, but. Well, we, we have redone the roof, windows, the patio out back. Inside has all been done. The one item we didn't do originally was the siding. We replaced some panels, the wood panels, when we redid the project. But this is, you know, seamless siding. It's gonna make.
Steel seamless siding.
Golf ball resistin' action?
Maybe not, but yeah, we, we can do get a few that far, but not too many. Not my shot.
Of course.
Excuse my putts, I'd reach that far.
So they might hit straight one.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the bid from Schrader Siding, Carolina, for the total bid price of twelve thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Thank you. The second item under reports is Third Street HMA resurfacing, statement of completion and final acceptance of work. And Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. OMG Midwest or Tri-State Paving has completed the work on the Third Street resurfacing project. Actual completion date was April 13th of 2018. There were forty-one days included in the original contract, and they were, there were fifty-three working days charged to the project. The origin, or the contract price ended up being seven hundred ninety-three thousand, eight fifty-six oh one, but the final construct, unaudited construction cost was seven hundred eighty-seven, fifty-seven, fifty-eight. So the day, the project ran over time and under the contract. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend acceptance of the certificate of completion for the work.
Any receding issues, long receding issues, like we had on, uh?
We have.
Hi, Richard.
We have had some. We're, and they are kind of ongoing right now.
If you're on top of them?
We are.
That's what I like to hear.
We think.
This, uh.
I love the trail.
This is the culmination of many different projects coming together, isn't it? Our Third Street, now we're done on Third, are we, Randy?
I think we are. And, yes, it is. First of all, the Stormshore project.
Right.
Then the Trail project and the Street project, so. Yeah, we've, project Third Street out.
It's been a long project. It's come together well as a whole at the end. Thank you for all your efforts and energies. It's, it's really nice to see that corridor and travel. It's, it is much improved.
No flooding.
No flooding.
Heavy rain, no flooding.
Any other questions for Randy? Not, I need a motion to approve the statement of completion and final acceptance work for the Third Street HMA resurfacing project. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Haley and a second by Fleischer. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Cox?
Yes.
Baze?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Question is approved.
Thank you. The third item is the solicitor ordinance, food vendor discussion. And Brad, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Local business has come forward and asked that we review our ordinances dealing with the sale of food on public right of ways. We currently have an ordinance called the Solicitor Transient Merchant Ordinance, Chapter 122. It does allow for sales within the city from outside vendors such as food trucks, trailers, cars, things like that, but they cannot be on public right of way when they're doing this. This was regulated by a couple, a couple other ordinances. So I had a little bit of discussion with Dave, Preach, Council, and the idea was to see what your thoughts are, how do you want to move forward with this? Is this something we want to look into, say we're happy with the way the ordinances are now, or make changes that would allow either the sale on to the roadways, or at least allow some type of permitting process that we currently have for the transient merchants to get something like this completed?
So they like parking in the parking lots?
Well, they.
Parking spaces, I guess?
Yes, that's what they're looking for. This, this, this business that came to us is because they don't have, they don't have a park, a private parking lot to allow this. And they do, they are, have two sides that are ankle parking. In the south side of their property is a city-owned parking lot. So they currently are not able to sell any of those locations.
Does this become more?
An occurrence, or?
Well, since this business opened, yes. Before that, no.
Not really.
No. It's more of a trend in the cities for sure, and it's starting to come this way.
Think food trucks. I mean, this is what it's aimed at.
It is. And a lot of the bigger cities, Iowa City, Cedar Rapids, when they have food truck ordinances that specify this, we don't have daily need for it. I think maybe we will. As of now, we haven't. It's been more of a monthly request.
Do they have to license with the city if they're here?
They're not current, just through a solicitor's permit. It is a permit requirement. They do have health inspection requirements, that they have to go through the state.
State, right. But we don't know if they're coming in or coming out. Do they contact you? Yes.
Sometimes. Other times we find out about it at four o'clock when they're supposed to arrive at five o'clock.
Brad, this is a lot of years ago, but there used to be a vendor truck that came from Dennison, came through town, would hit a few businesses and such. And when I was out the armory, they stopped out there quite a bit. But do you know how they were able to operate at that time?
I don't. Now, if it's, if it's something where they have a set route, like a swan's, snap on, things like that, those ones are allowed through our permit.
This is an actual hot food vendor that.
If they have, if they have established route, then they were allowed. Otherwise, if they were coming to door-to-door sales for cable, they'd have to come through us first.
There was that taco trailer out there a couple of years ago at, at a general rental. I think, I think it was good. I really liked it.
Well, he went around to multiple places, as well does, as well does Barrel Smoke. And then you see the other, the big barbecue one that is in Ace a lot of times.
The cookies, I know, come to there, yeah.
So are we talking about those?
Those are on private, those are on private properties. They're required through the solicitor's permit to come through us, but as far as selling, we don't restrict them. Another one that we're getting is they want to sell on our right of ways. They want to sell on our parking spaces.
You know, a truck where you pop open the side?
Yes, food order?
So do we grant these permission on a daily, monthly basis? I've.
Probably not. We're getting the request that this has started to occur. The, the ordinance dealing with sidewalks and street usage does allow it, but they have to get the permission of the council, which doesn't always work in their schedule, unfortunately. For them, I guess, I don't know. It's your option, if you want to continue that way, you certainly can. If you want to make changes to, to those two ordinances to allow something similar to the solicitor's permit, which then what we do is we'll go look at the places, and we do minor background checks on them, the best we can legally, so we have some idea who the people are that are coming in.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think the same place also wants to have, wanted to have an area outdoors to be able to have people sit and eat and enjoy stuff outdoors at tables.
This will not cover that.
And this would be in the city right of, right, I, I know. But, you know, you go to some of the bigger communities and they have restaurants that are out there on the sidewalk. You know, so I know I see it, but I, are they in the city? Is that the property owner's property up to a certain point? Is the whole sidewalk, you know, I don't know.
I know in Iowa City, the city grants, I think through a rental agreement, they grant them a couple parking spaces. Like local restaurants, and they actually put a deck and three or four.
A floating deck thing, yeah.
I don't know that I'm all in on it, but I wouldn't mind seeing just some, maybe sample language of what it would look like going on.
The, the idea is trying to keep it simple, I think. We would need to make a couple changes to, I think it's Chapter 135 and 136. Those are the ones that prohibit any sales on sidewalks and streets. They currently allow it through permission from council, but my, just quickly thinking about, the idea would be to change it so it matches the solicitor's permit work. The police department would be the ones that would grant those.
Because it works every two weeks, and I don't think some of them always think that far ahead.
Almost all of them don't think ahead.
Opportunistic market.
It's probably a silly question, but so if businesses downtown are setting stuff on the sidewalks downtown, is that okay, or are they coming to you for approval on that as well?
We have not. I've been given approvals for those, requests for those things.
Because that'd be the same.
The chamber has come when they close down Adam Street and have their outside sales.
Ridiculous thing.
Yes.
Right, but just on a daily basis, they should be.
No, and the right of way allows for three, I think, I believe it's three feet in the city code. I'm going to look at Randy on that a little bit. So the Lincoln Highway Trading Company, they're allowed three feet there to have their items outside.
I think it warrants some discussion, because I, I mean, I think, I've heard of food trucks, other people wanting to bring some stuff in, and I've talked to the Barrel Smoke guy. Again, it comes down to competition. And I think when you start talking baseball games and football games and things like that, they're, that's what they want to capitalize on too, so.
And Eric from Barrel Smoke has come to us and got his permits in the past, but he's also on private properties.
Right.
So that one, off, so it's land on Highway 30, I guess, the Mount West, a couple places too.
And I think a couple questions as we were talking, and staff, that I think council, I think really needs to think about is set aside the one business that, that maybe is kind of pushing us, which is a good thing on this issue. Do you want them throughout on the right of way? Do you want them in parking lots? I mean, that may be okay, I guess. We're just wanting some guidance on, how far do you want to go? Do you want it to be sponsored by a particular business before they can have it? Or if Mike's doctor stand shows up every Saturday night on Adam Street, is that okay? So I, I think those are the type of things we really want some guidance on. And I think we also wanted to really have this discussion, look at the front row here. You know, there may be some businesses in town that may not, that may find objection to this. So, you know, we wanted to get some publicity around that we're, we're starting to look at this so that someone's not shocked to find out there's twenty-four hour food trucks out.
The ones I've noticed in other small towns in northwest Iowa, they're on the private property. And so that to me, you know, it takes it away from traffic congestion, pedestrian. We're really concentrated downtown. And I think it's neat. I think it's neat that these vendors, it's a trend, I think. I've even, I even saw some woman, she had her vendor truck and she was selling all chocolate. That was really, I thought, good. But I, you know, I don't know, Brad, do you, have you looked at what other towns do?
You, there's so many different options, and, and every town has difference. Some allow them for a day, some allow them, they give permits for an entire year. They almost are selling places, basis to people. So every town is so different, it kind of depends on what you think will work for us. And our, we're looking at your downtown area, so first, you're going to want to get a parking stalls. Will this have any effect on local restaurants or businesses that are also selling food? There's a lot to think about, what works for our community.
You gotta worry about, if you're doing a parking lot, all of a sudden you got a half a dozen vendors in there, you gotta be careful on that, too.
I've had requests for people in the parks, these vendors have asked me, Grand Park, and we've said no, all along, but they'll want to come into the parks eventually, too.
I'd be more concerned of anything about a safety issue as to where they want to locate. I mean, when, when we, when they come in, are you going to check and see?
We'll have to, mostly because of the visibility. So where this business is at, they do have parking. It's a fairly busy road that comes from residential into the downtown area, the edge of downtown area. Heavily trafficked, and the intersections are already kind of some blind spots, and so we'd have to do some restriction on where they can park. Maybe it's something where we keep them out of ankle parking, and they must be in parking lots, that helps with visibility, but as long as they're not blocking.
Parking lots seem better and safer to me than out on the regular street. There's a lot of different places that, like you said, blind spots just concern the economy with this.
Yeah.
And also, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I, I would also say that just like what we discussed earlier, the, the potential for unfair competition to people that are already in town bothers me a little bit, too.
The majority of the calls we get are from people who are not residents of the city that want to bring these in.
But they're for short periods of time, like?
One day.
One day.
Ten hours max, so more like four to six hours.
Do they generally follow, like, events?
Events, yeah.
That are coming in town?
Yes.
See, if we're doing something, just looking at some of the details, I'd almost want to put it to the point of a certain size parking lot, they'd be allowed in, not necessarily roadside or the street side. So I'm just thinking, in particular, business requesting us parking right across the street, right in front of their, their competition, if that's the true we want.
What I was going to ask, follow up with Jerry, is size an issue, too? I mean, are we going, you know, some you see are real little, or are we going to have like a giant?
Size of a UPS truck.
I don't, can we restrict that? I, you know, it's.
I suppose you could.
I think size would be an issue, especially with visibility and.
The city of Cedar Rapids restricts the two parking spaces only. So what, if they can get a vehicle in the two parking spaces, then that's their regard. But they are allowing them on the side of the street, so two parking, parking spaces in front of downtown business Adams.
Well, where I've seen food trucks be really neat is in the bigger cities, and they'll line the streets with them on certain days and events and stuff. That's never going to be us, that.
Well, I think so, but if you get two or three people out there marking.
Could be.
You kind of have two or three trucks lined up for easy.
Well, and then you get into, they're using parking spaces, and we have pedestrians and choppers and people going to other businesses. I personally, I don't, I would not want to use the parking spaces for safety and other, the other issues I mentioned.
I think about a controlled area, as well.
Yeah, yeah, something easy to monitor, easy to restrict.
So are the ones that, ones that have done it so far, Brad, how, what are they using as far as an ordinance to be able to do that in town now?
If they're on private property, they're, they're able to use the solicitor's permit for that. So they can, they can get a permit through us, come through the police department, we do a small background on them. Once we have the permits approved, they pay F D, they get the permit, and they can sell at a private parking lot area where they have permission. So if they were going to set up at Ace Hardware, they get permission from that owner, and then they can sell at that spot. That's the current trend. We've had some just show up and start selling without any knowledge.
Oh.
That's what causes the problem.
That's the problem. You have something that you can enforce? Have them removed.
We get it. All right.
Okay.
I'll go ahead, Mike, please.
Go ahead, because I was going to kind of wrap things up.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll just say, I think I'm going to have to research it quite a bit more before I'm ready to give you much guidance, Mike. I, I'm not first enough on it to do so.
Yeah, as I say, I think we need to bring this back. It's good discussion and stuff, but this way that press has a chance to get it out, starting to get some feedback from local businesses and such for both need and opposition or support. But I think it's a good discussion, I just don't think we're anywhere near providing direct guidance tonight.
Do you know of some communities our size that are doing something similar, Brad?
I have to reach out.
You have to reach out, okay.
If I find anything. Mostly it's been the larger cities, Ames, Cedar Rapids, College Towns.
Dennison, like I said, they had a truck several years ago. I'm going to have to reach out to their law enforcement there and just maybe pick their brain a little bit.
Absolutely. Main thing is now we get in the public, we'll start getting some feedback, that's.
Right.
How long are these solicitors' permits that we use now in, in effect? Do you give them a permit? What do they have, three days?
Well, they can request up to five days. They're for twenty-four hours each time, if they wanted to have.
They'd have to reapply every?
They can apply once, they have to specify up to how many days. Majority of them are, are one-day permits is all they're getting by requesting.
Okay, but if they could ask for up to five, so like, the big, I hate to use names, but places that have been in fairway parking lot on fundraisers and, and such, they are asking you for, they're there for two or three days.
If they're coming out of a fundraiser as a nonprofit, it's different. They have, they're an exemption for a solicitor's permit. So if they're coming raising money for a local bargain shop, and they're parked out front of there, then, you know, there's no requirement for a permit from us.
Nothing at all? Okay.
But if they were to go to a business downtown, and I'm raising money for the animal shelter, for example?
We would have to make sure that's true.
Okay.
But they could sell in a public place anyway.
Right, okay. Can you give me, I mean, I, I guess I'd like to see what some other communities our size are doing, if it's, if it's relevant to what we need to do or just keep what we got.
A little bit, I've reached out, there's some analogy for our size.
Get to set the trend instead of follow the plot?
Yeah, and I would be interested to hear your opinion after a little more research, too, and just see what you guys take in the P D would be up for enforcement wise.
Could be a challenge.
My travels with my business, I see this all the time. I see all varieties.
Speaking of. Of the trucks and all that stuff?
That kind of reminds me of another question. We're, we're not just dealing with food trucks necessarily, and someone else can try and sell. I mean, this has to be inclusive to.
Flag check, waters.
Whatever else they might want to sell, not just.
I think we could, and having to refer to our attorney for that, but I would, I think we could restrict types of sales, but I, I don't know where our legal presence would be, I don't know.
Well, there's something to talk about.
As I remember, ordinance allows everything at this point, and I don't think there's any restrictions. Well, if you want to come in and sell flags, Mike wants to sell hamburgers.
Same deal.
Fireworks.
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 No, can't do that. He was selling hand acid after I sold my burger.
Don't.
But certainly, David, they could add those restrictions if they want to.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
And I see it on wheels, I see it on tents, you know, I, there's all kinds of things.
Seen push cards?
Push cards. So I'm out of a backup pickup, I, I see this every weekend. And there's lots of different varieties all over. This will, this will be a tough one to write up. I was at a private manufacturing facility once, I saw the darnedest thing, I saw two gals pulling coolers out of the trunk of a car, and they opened them up and had their food wrapped up in individual wrappers, and they were hocking it to the manufacturing employees, all sorts of different models.
Seen many times, a hundred and twenty grown men chasing after an ice cream truck going through the field. Down on your military bases, oh, yeah.
Do you have an idea of where you want to go, Brad?
I guess they keep off of the street parking. If we're going to do this, negative parking lot. Our downtown has a lot of blind corners as it is now, and adding a large trailer truck is going to cause some problems. There's some limited parking also, if you get your downtown area, you know, if you go down there during lunch hour, trying to find a place to park here.
We do have parking lots within walking distance of virtually every downtown business.
That's true. There's a lot of private parking lots in, around the downtown area that I can only imagine people would allow sales in.
What about our farmer's market? That falls into this?
There is an, there is an under exemption in our, in our permit policy.
Okay.
There are some certain items that are exempt, and that is one of those. Anyone selling homemade goods, such as crafting items are also exempt.
There's all kinds of those people out there.
He said, there's people.
I'm just going to go with your one.
Do you want, do we, do we need to change anything that we've got, do you think, or is our?
No.
Our current stuff is fine?
I need to pursue some feedback.
Okay.
We'll make some changes.
Okay.
I would imagine with the weather changes, we're not going to see as many coming.
Yeah.
With the colder weather, so we got some time to.
Okay.
The ice skate, we're going in soon, see if we have some ice skate vendors.
If possible. Right in the parking lot, you bet.
I might want to help you with that one, Brad. I do this for a living.
This could be an interesting.
Yeah, there's a lot of things I see that I can help you with.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Alright.
Our last report is a discussion with regards to Lincoln Highway Suites, the former Morrison Apartments tax abatement request, new urban renewal area, and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we discussed at the last meeting, there's a local development group that's looking to redevelop the Morrison Apartments to be called Lincoln Highway Streets. And to complete that redevelopment, the developer is requesting the city establish an urban revitalization district in order to offer tax abatement for the project. At the August 27th meeting, council requested staff to identify a potential area that could be included in urban revitalization area and to detail various tax abatement schedules that could be offered. Just as a quick background, tax abatement really provides just a temporary reduction in property taxes over a specified period of time on a portion of the assessed value added by new construction or improvements to an existing structure. So it's not the entire value, just the new value added. And there are various abatement schedules based on the type of property that's being assessed. So first, to identify a potential urban revitalization area, staff looked at the Carroll County Condition windshield survey that was completed by Region 12 as part of the 2013 conference plan. A copy of the map was included in the packet. Staff really looked at the highest area of concentration of Condition 3, fair condition, and Condition 4, poor and dilapidated housing as a potential urban revitalization district. Then if we recall, over a year ago, Don Canny suggested the city establish an urban revitalization district in a portion of the town covering the center core. At the time, Mr. Canny provided a map to the council he felt should be placed in an urban revitalization district and a copy of that map was included in the packet. And really remarkably, those two maps correlated very well. There was some areas that we made some slight adjustments, but really based on those two maps, we did develop a map that was included in your packet on what staff at this point is at least suggesting as a potential district. We could look bigger, we could look smaller, but really for a discussion point and really since we have some good reference maps, we thought this was as good as any. Also, moving to potential abatement schedules, we did include the various abatement schedules that would be included. I'm not gonna go on those in detail unless the council desires that. But really, there's, the only difference is residential, is it gonna be blighted or non-blighted designation? Multi-residential, commercial, industrial, it's the same in either designation. But really, I think the council, do you want to designate an area as blighted? That obviously provides more flexibility and more availability for abatement. But we can discuss that in detail. I would also note that the council can choose to offer different types of abatements in different areas. So if you want to carve out a subarea and have multifamily residential, for example, and exclude commercial in an area, you can do that. But obviously, there's other tools in play like zoning. If you have a property that's residentially zoned, even if you broad brush, say this entire area will allow commercial abatement, if it's not zoned for it, you're not gonna do it anyhow. So there are some other protections in place for that. So really, we're looking to have a discussion on both the area and then a potential abatement schedule. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council has.
So we can do both residential and commercial in the same spot?
You could, yes.
And you can select areas of just residential and not commercial?
You can do that, yep.
I, because if you don't do commercial, though, some of those are businesses, if you're not helping them, what could you? I get the housing, I guess I don't have any problem with the housing part, but I, I don't, the commercial part, if there's some businesses that need rejuvenation, I mean, it doesn't do a whole lot if you got rejuvenating the house, you're not doing the businesses. That's where those people are employed and they're gonna be working.
I'd want to keep continuity in the area myself, to your, to your point, Mr. Mayor, if we're gonna improve this residential, this residential, and then we've got commercials developed adjacent to it or somewhere nearby, and I'd like to see that opportunity exist.
What does an apartment complex fall under then? Is it residential or is it a business?
It's multi.
If it's three units or more, it'd be multifamily residential. So three units or more and 75% of the space is used for apartment, then it's gonna be multifamily residential.
Do we have to contact each one of these owners and businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is really, it's some, I mean, it's-
It's work.
It's work, but it's not. We could easily generate a list out of G I S of all these parcels. So that process is fairly easy. But we, yes, we do need to identify the area so we can begin preparing that information.
Is there a timeframe to which they can respond? I mean, do you have to have a certain percentage after respond, C A or name?
So they're notified of a public hearing.
Alright.
If we receive an objection, and I'm not sure of the percentage off the top of my head, so I'm not gonna speculate. But if we receive a certain number of the property owners object to be included in that district, then we have to hold a second public hearing 30 days after the original public hearing.
Mike, why would somebody object to this and who would that somebody maybe be?
I'm, I'm not certain.
I mean, do you foresee anybody that would object to this?
In other words, what's the downside?
What, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if the council goes down the path, say, you know, we want to designate an area as blighted, certainly there's some stigma that that may come with that tagline. But it does, it doesn't necessarily, to me, it's a word in record that no one's really gonna see. And it does provide some additional abatement schedules. Certainly, I think based on Region 12 work on the windshield study, I think there's some ability to make that designation of the council to choose. But again, it gives them a better abatement schedule if they do improve. So that's ultimately what we want to see, is improvements in these neighborhoods. We don't want taxation to be felt as a disincentive. We want people to make improvements in the neighborhood. And this is one of those tools that really one or two people start making improvements and you start seeing a chain reaction and a lot of people start making improvements.
Nick Breida did this and I think they did pretty much the whole town.
They did. They did the entire town except one subdivision-
That's fairly new.
-which was fairly new, yep.
Once you establish a district, how long does that district stay established before you can change it?
Well, it can be changed at any time. And the length of the district is dependent on the length of time the council wants to establish the district. You can establish it forever and then 10 years from now in the district. You can establish for two years and two years later extend the district. So that's a council discretionary item. Obviously, though, if you set it for a short period of time, you're gonna go through the same public hearing process if you later decide to extend the district.
On the notification process, how detailed? Is it certified letters or just a simple letter to them?
It's a simple letter to each property owner.
And it's only people inside the designated area?
Correct.
So if you're one block outside the designated area, then you don't get contacted?
If you're across the street, you don't get contacted. So generally, we're going down center lines of streets. So for example, West 13th Street is one of the northern boundaries in an area. If you're on the north side, you're not, A, you're not gonna be eligible and B, you're not gonna get noticed.
Now, there's, you know, down the road, could you extend that north from 13th Street up to 18th Street?
You could.
Include that down the road so-
Yep.
People in that area come forward and say, geez, we'd like to do something.
Well, that's what I think. I think once you establish an area, we should, as council members, we should go drive that area in the area, out of the area and see what we need to change instead of just doing it on a map.
Yep. And certainly, that doesn't mean you can be in an area, and I can think of my neighborhood, there's maybe one or two houses. What you try to do is, well, there's a couple of different philosophies. I mean, one philosophy, you can say, we're gonna include the entire city. And there's a lot of cities that do that. There's nothing wrong with that. I think if the council wanted to go down and say, the entire city's blighted, I think that's a tough standard because the statute says a substantial number of the properties need to show that condition, that blight condition. And so to say the entire city of Carroll meets that's probably difficult. If you're trying to target it to those areas that are kind of most at need, I think that's what we did was trying to show that a substantial number of the properties in this area meet that. And we have material and work that's been done that's really established that.
You know, if you look at the map there, just, you know, in South 13th Street, that is definitely an older part of town. That's some of the first homes that were built. And I know there are some of the larger homes that people have gone in and rebuilt and redone on their own. That Minchin House was a big, huge house for a long time and it's gone to a restaurant, to a floral shop and all sorts of different things. But it was one of the prominent homes in Carroll years and years ago. Something to, maybe somebody have someone restore that to a residential home and change the value of it, that would be a significant boon to that area. Mike, I'm not, if you can answer this question, I'm gonna take the horse away out of the stall on this one. If we blighted an area and if that area just happened to coincide with railroad track down that area, is there any additional resources that we could use for training or mitigation if we decided to go down that road?
Not through urban revitalization. Urban renewal could be an area that we look at, but not urban revital, urban revitalization is really a tool to find, to provide tax abatement. Good question.
So do you just need some direction from us where to go or?
I, I think-
Is this mostly discussion, is what I'm seeing?
It's discussion. I mean, if council's comfortable saying, yes, this is the map, we'll start work on it. If council wants more time to consider additional areas or subtraction, then we need to really wait for additional guidance from council. We don't want to do a lot of work and then redo a lot of work.
Are there some, if there's some council people, I mean, I wouldn't mind driving around looking to see myself.
Yeah, I would too.
I would concur with, with Laverne, just to make sure that I'm comfortable with.
I think-
I remember, I was on the comprehensive plan when Chris Whitaker led us through the thing, the process, and he actually drove around and did it. And, you know, so it's in his mind's eye, this is how he categorized it. But this was several years ago and I'm thinking, you know, some of the conditions that were good then might not be as good. And I think this map, this guideline you've given us really encompasses the good, the fair, and then the poor. I think it's, it's covering a lot of territory that needs this type of help. And I think it's a good, good map.
I just, I know when I, you know, you get up 7th, 8th Street, 9th Street and you drive east and west on some of those roads, there's some houses that I think could greatly benefit.
Well, and how-
And I know of a friend of mine that bought one down on 8th and Court and he's completely redid the house, all on his own.
Well, I think we-
Did a really, really nice job or?
We do need to take care of our current housing stock. And that was a top priority when we talk about, you know, the housing, neighborhood stabilization. And so I think this is, I think people will look at this very favorably.
Can you have two districts, one like downtown commercial building and then one more residential and have two different types of programs?
Yes. You can make it as complicated or as easy as you want. City of Des Moines-
He didn't say good question, did he?
No, I didn't, no, not at all.
I wouldn't say that.
I mean, City of Des Moines does several sub-districts and there's different abatement schedules based on where you're at. In some areas, you can do multifamily, some areas you can't. So you can make it, you can cut the pie any way you want.
Okay. More to think on.
Yeah. And there's also, there can be a logic to say, no, this is your blighted area and you can offer an incentive citywide, we're just gonna have more focused incentives in this area, this targeted area or whatever area you target.
Mike, do you envision us doing something like Mason City with the application process? Is that what all other towns do that get involved in this?
I think we need to have a conversation with, and I'm not gonna, what's the accounting standard, GASB? There's some GASB standards that we're gonna run into if the council does the approval. So we want to fully understand those and it's how we account for it and report them in our audit.
Okay.
So if we don't have a council approval and it just can be done at the assessor's level, then it gets accounted one way versus if the council has to review every one of those.
This is a complex-
Yes.
Code chapter, yeah.
I guess I, I'm reading this about the difference between blighted and non-blighted. And I don't, I guess the one figure 10 years, 115%. The 115% being more than-
Yes.
Meaning that they would actually make-
So let's-
They would actually make money or save taxes on something they didn't even do.
Yeah, so the council can choose the schedule. You can do, so there are four different options you can pick. 10 years, 115% up to $20,000 of value added. So if you add $20,000 or $10,000 of value, you're gonna get $11,500 reduction in your value as you pay taxes.
So that would cost us money to do that?
It would, yep. Now, you remember, these are all maximums. You can have a lower standard. But also remember, we're trying to incentivize-
Right.
-people to do it. These are small, you know, small projects. I mean, maybe it's a small little addition to your house. I mean, this isn't, you know, 20,000, it caps out.
That's 20,000 on a $100,000 house, for example.
Yes, you're not gonna, you can't build a $100,000 house and get that much savings.
I'm, I'm thinking and maybe I'm way up the street, siding, windows, stuff like that. Is that the kind of things that we could potentially see within this, the scope of this?
So you have to realize too, maintenance items don't necessarily increase your value.
Sure.
Putting a new roof on, your house is probably the same value as it was the day before. It's really going to be, yeah, if you add a nice little porch or a peak to your roof or add a little kitchenette addition or add a garage, it's most likely going to be an addition that's gonna get you the value, not necessarily, or new construction. Tear down a dilapidated house and build a new house. That'll be the really big one that gets it. But window siding, it may add a little value. I mean, that's the county assessor you'd really have to have that discussion with. But it's not, you know, you put a $10,000 roof on, that's not $10,000 of value added.
True. That's what I wanted to ask.
Good question.
So the county's gonna have somebody in place with this to go out and determine the value?
Through the assessment process, yeah. And that's through their normal assessment. It's not more work going on with the county assessor. But as these projects go through, if it increases value and it's a qualified increase in value, then yes, you'll be eligible for that.
Okay. So the person would have to notify the assessor that this happened? Or bank on them actually checking their particular property, which is may or may not happen.
But we also send building permits to the assessor.
Okay.
Yeah. So they'll-
They're gonna, they're gonna have to report it because they want the abatement.
Right.
Yes.
But the building permit will trigger the assessor to say something then, yeah.
It is kind of, I mean, when you look at the blighted, residential blighted criteria, it does get kind of confusing because in part, it says three years or 10 years, both at 100%. But at the same thing, you have to remember, you can always go less.
Right.
So you could actually have nine years at 100%, eight years at 100%, two years at 100%. It's quirky that why would you have three years specifically listed and 10 years, but that's what the code does.
Another question I had was, do these carry on? Maybe I missed that down here. I don't think I saw it. Does it carry on to new owners?
Yes.
Did that say that? I didn't see it.
It's not in here, but, but yes, it does.
So someone fixes their house, changes it, the new owner will still have the abatement?
Correct.
Okay.
And I know some communities that have really pushed the envelope to say, we're doing like 100% abatement for 10 years on new construction. I don't know how the entire city of Perry is blighted, but they've declared-
They managed to do that.
They've declared the entire city. It gets controversial because when you're selling your house and you don't have tax abatement, your neighbor has five years left, well, that's a lot more appealing than my house.
All pieces to this.
Yep.
Is there any hurry to this for us?
Other than the developer's request, no. And certainly, we can go look at a more focused, but-
But this isn't gonna help the developer. We can't possibly get this done in time to help them. Am I right?
Possibly we could, but we'd have to finish something by the end of the year. Which we don't have to take an action today to do that, but we'll have to start moving quickly to do that.
I, I know I would like time, like what Laverne said, is just take a nice afternoon to go around and look at where I am on that map. If there's, maybe it's 14th Street or 15th Street or maybe it's 10th Street. To me, I just, I'll leave the look at that. What do you mean, but I'm not, I'm not voting.
So bringing this back in two weeks is not detrimental to getting to work on it to help the other investor?
Well, we have to, we have to, the biggest work component is writing a legal description and determining who's all in the district and generating that list. I can't do either till we say this is where we're at. So, you know, two weeks is two weeks, it is what it is.
I, I hear what you're saying. I would like to have that developer do their stuff too. And they understand it, because we had talked, we talked.
I just think it's a big decision. You better be careful trying to do it based off of just those guys.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And I don't want to go down 13th Street and there's a house across the street that-
Yes.
I think we could include.
And that's gonna probably happen.
We need to do a little bliff on the map and then you need to do that.
No, make it nice, even.
I know, I know.
Only 14th Street.
Yeah.
There'll be exceptions all over on this.
You're gonna miss some.
Go dive it and do work on it.
Since we're new in this, I think we need to make it simple.
I hear you.
Dial down some of these, some of these seem complex to me.
In what?
The proposals, well, 115% like I mentioned.
Well, that will get dialed down. We just-
All of these things to me, I just want it to be a simple thing as we start. We can always, you said we can tinker with it later, but-
Yeah.
I think the location is the worst. Yes.
You and Mayor make the choice and sign it.
I already made one.
Yeah, I think you did. That was, that was it there.
Yeah.
I wasn't involved enough.
I really just want to review that recommendation.
I really just want to review that recommendation. I want to drive it. You won't fit.
Yes, please come forward and again, now it's your name, Ronnie, I know, but...
I'm just...I'm understanding what you're talking about, you know, rebuilding the apartment complex along Highway 30 on the north side there. But how do you regulate? You know, if you take Park Street and go south of the tracks, okay, we got Culligan, and we got an apartment complex owned by Craig Luckto, Craig Luckto. Well, then, there's a, you know, actually house dwelling in between that and Eppelwater. Well, Shune Construction bought this property. Well, now Shune Construction has built this humongous building behind this house. Well, upstairs in this building, it's...there's enough room to put two layers upstairs in this building. Well, I don't know if he's paying taxes, commercial taxes, or what he's paying, if he's just paying residential taxes. But he's had their having gymnastic practice, which are...they're hiring somebody to come in and teach gymnastics upstairs.
So it's his property? It's his property, right?
Yeah.
He owns it?
Yes.
I guess he can do whatever he wants with it. It's his property.
Yeah, but it's...is it commercial or is it residential?
That'd be determined by the county assessor, not the city.
Well, I'm just...I'm just trying...
You can ask the assessor that question. They'd be able to tell you that.
I'm just...I'm just wondering because he's now...he's blocking the apartment. There are people are parking out in front of the apartment complex. They're blocking, you know, the alley.
Brad, have you had any complaints about that at all? No, okay.
Not yet, but there are people that live in the apartment complex are...some of them are complaining.
So then they probably need to address that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I just...you know, I'm just trying to figure out how this is all, you know, figures it.
Sure. I don't have any comments this evening. Are there any comments from the city councilman?
So the city of Carroll is actually in the final two for the People's Choice Award. It is presented by the Iowa League of Cities. It's on Merchants Park. That competition actually runs through noon on Thursday. You can vote on Facebook. So we encourage people to do it. Last time I checked, we are actually in the lead. So if there's individuals that want to attend that, please let me know. That'll be a banquet that Iowa League of Cities has on Thursday evening. So I'd like to get a few people to attend that if possible.
Council boss?
I don't have any questions. What?
Is it council boss?
And council...what did I say? Yeah?
I don't think you said...
Oh, council.
Mid-America Center.
Was that this Saturday?
It's Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, maybe.
Oh, my gosh.
I'm done at four. I...
What time?
You sent out the email. I'm not gonna be able to...
Oh, I didn't get planned out, but that's what that email you just sent.
I was gonna try and go about 4:30 because it didn't look like anybody was responding, and I thought, well, I'll go. Unless Jack wants to go, but...or a couple of us. I can't leave till 4:30, so I just drive more myself, but...
I think I'm going.
You are going?
Okay.
What time are you leaving?
Well, we...yeah.
We'll talk afterwards.
4:30.
Okay. If there's anything else, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second. No other discussion? We'll go and vote.
Basically, yes, question?
Yes.
Have seen it.
Yes.